Okay, it's now six thirty. I'd like to welcome Nottingham to another Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order by starting with the Pledge of Leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice or all.
All right. Hopefully, the mic system is okay. I understand we had some testing and it's all right?
It seemed to work well during the last meeting.
Okay, awesome, great. All right, before we get started, I'd like to recognize some folks, you know, three hundredth committee with Steve Welch and his crew, Jay Fire Chief Vilchok and his crew, and Chief Fawn and his crew, her crew rather, for what was a very successful bonfire at the sand pit on Saturday. It was well received, great turnout, and I'm hoping that this is going to be a great beginning to our three hundredth year celebration, which will be a year-long celebration. So, I just want to congratulate on behalf of the board to those who made that a smooth event. Thank you. Moving right along. Has everybody had the opportunity to look at the manifest and payroll? I didn't see anything other.
No, me neither.
I'm good with it.
Tyler, you good?
I'm good, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of January tenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the payroll manifest of January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Minutes from twelve twenty-one and twelve twenty-seven? Nothing stood out for me.
To approve the minutes as written.
Lorraine, were there any corrections to either of those?
There might have been, but I can say as written or I can change it, but amended.
As amended.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, I'll second it then.
Good. Motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? All right. Reports from the signed boards and committees, budget?
Budget, yeah, we had a, we met several times during the last week, they're kind of waiting on us to finish up.
Hopefully, that'll be tonight.
Meeting tomorrow night and then public hearing on Thursday night.
Okay.
But, yeah, they're just waiting on us, the school was in on Thursday, so.
Okay. And the planning board?
Meeting on Wednesday. Last meeting we had, we have a meeting this Wednesday, last meeting that we had was to discuss war on articles.
CIP?
So, our last meeting was last week, I believe, and I reviewed the changes to the CIP based on the changes that we made to the budget and our decision to use fund balance for some things. This is pretty straightforward. We're still waiting on some final information from the school, but barring that, we're just about ready to wrap it up.
Great, okay. Three hundredth, other than?
Three hundredth, yeah, just I got a meeting, again, that meeting's Thursday night as well, so.
Gonna be a busy night for you, huh?
Yeah. I think everyone's happy with Saturday night.
Okay. All right, Donna's not here from Marston, but as everyone have noticed, if you haven't, if you drive by the fields, the two backstops are up. Looks great down there, so that is moving right along, so thank you, Donna, and the Marston crew for, you know, moving forward with that. So, town administrator report.
What I have revolves around the mask mandate, there are three quick items to talk about under that. Donna asked me for the current statistics of vote in Nottingham and the state. I have that if you want that information before you make a decision tonight whether we continue or not.
Well, let me ask the board, does the board feel comfortable making, reviewing this tonight, or do you want to keep it in place?
I would have to keep it in place. Yeah, from what I've seen, the numbers are going up.
Well, let's see.
And other towns are still reinstituting their mask policies.
Okay, Tyler?
You want the numbers?
Yeah, let's.
As of January seventh, there was two thousand and ninety-three cases in New Hampshire. I mean, on that day, there was two thousand and ninety-three new cases. We currently have fifteen thousand three hundred and forty active cases in New Hampshire, and over a seven-day period, and that was from January first to January seventh, there were eighteen hundred new cases, and that's a forty-two percent increase over the previous seven days, the last seven days of the year. So, it went up forty-two percent the first week versus the last week of the year. In New Hampshire, we have fifty-six percent are fully vaccinated and sixty-two percent have at least one shot. Nottingham, as of Friday on January seventh, we had forty-three known active cases, six of those were new. Now, that doesn't count for any home testing now because that kind of mixes our numbers, which it possibly could be higher. I'm not saying it is, but those numbers aren't necessarily getting reported. But we know of forty-three active cases in Nottingham right now.
Okay, so, let's put this in perspective a little bit. So, you're saying there's fifteen thousand cases are active right now in the state?
As of January seventh.
As of January seventh?
Friday.
And the population of the state is what, one point three million?
I don't know.
Give or take. So, I mean, and there's forty-two, you said, for Nottingham?
Forty-three.
Forty-three with a population of fifty-four hundred, give or take? Maybe fifty-three. Okay. I'm just trying to put things in perspective here in regards to the number of cases versus the population size. It sounds to me, Tyler, what is your thought?
I mean, I don't, like I said, I believe in the mask, it helped or whatever, but I also believe, like I said, to, I don't know, you can go into a restaurant, you can go anywhere in the state here, you do not need to wear a mask once you sit down or whatever, and I, my problem is who polices wearing a mask? I've come into this facility several times and people aren't wearing masks.
That's the second thing I'd like to talk about.
But I mean, I just want to, you know, and I understand it, like even I said on the budget committee, people aren't wearing masks, and I don't know, am I supposed to police that? I don't, I don't think it's any big job type, but I don't know.
Well, that, those are particulars we'll have to iron out, but would you be in favor of rescinding the mask or keeping the mask?
Well, I don't know, I don't, I don't want to. I think, you know, one of our roles is to, you know, make sure that Nottingham is a safe town, so I don't want to be saying that some people wear them, some people don't, I just don't know what to do about the ones that don't. I mean, I don't think. It's just, I understand if we had a meeting here and there was a hundred people here, I wouldn't even probably come to the meeting. It's just not, too small.
For the size room, yeah.
I don't know, we got things coming up, we're gonna have large numbers of people, so I don't know what the answer is.
John, you want, got input?
I did, I'm in favor of keeping the masks.
All right, wasn't sure if you were, Tony?
No, I think we should probably, like I said, given, you know, forty-two percent rise, especially, it doesn't seem to discriminate between vaccinated and non-vaccinated people.
Yes.
My, my own mother passed away during Christmas week. She was vaccinated and, yeah, that was an eye-opener, so.
I'm sorry to.
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you. But, that's, you know. I mean, I was in favor of it anyways, but that certainly just makes me, yeah, reinforces that belief that it's, that it's just as important even for vaccinated people, so.
All right, so Dale, how do you propose we deal with it, should we leave this in place? With those who don't want to wear it? I mean, you can't be here every meeting.
Before we go into that, I think you need to have a vote, the official vote, whether you didn't actually, you needed to.
Kind of getting the general consensus, but if somebody wanted to make a vote, make a motion rather.
All right, I'll make a motion to the select board, maintain the existing mask mandate for all town facilities until we review it again at our next meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, all those not in favor? Tie, split, we're gonna keep it in place.
Which brings up the point that Tyler just brought up. I have received a complaint about masks not being worn during, not this meeting, but other official meetings. And, at the very least, well, no, we have to do it everywhere, but during a meeting, and especially by representatives of Nottingham, we can't not follow our policy. I mean, we have had some individuals that chose not to be part of the meeting and left, and that is completely acceptable. But if you're going to be here representing Nottingham, you have to follow what the selectmen decide. So, that comes to you now. How does the board want to, what level do you want to enforce this? What do you want? Where do we go from here?
Yeah. So, my feeling on that, when we, when we first put this mask mandate in, was that, you know, it's a lawful order, we, the select board has not just the right, but the responsibility and the obligation to maintain health and safety of town facilities, right? It's under our jurisdiction and it's our responsibility. With that in mind, like I said, it's, it's a lawful order, and we have that authority under law to do that, right?
Okay, but, that being said, Tony, we don't have much say over elected official.
Well, it's not the elected official, it's the fact that they're in a town.
But if it is an elected official who happens to work in the building, and I'm not singling anybody out, I'm just using that as an example. You know, if, if that elected official comes in, refuses to wear a mask but wants to do their job, we as a board can't enforce that because that person is elected official unless we go through, I believe, the Attorney General's office because they follow up to that.
There's no waiver for elected officials.
I understand that, but how can we enforce it if that person refuses?
So.
I believe you can enforce the mask mandate, you can't enforce them doing and not doing their job, and that's where it gets what you're referring to, sketchy. You still have control over the facility.
I mean, if they choose to have their meeting out in the parking lot, that's a whole different thing, right? But if they're gonna have their meeting here in this building, they all need to be wearing their mask. And if somebody refuses to put their mask on in defiance of, you know, the select board's authority.
Are we really, do we really want to go that, so far as to if somebody refuses to wear a mask and refuses to leave, we'll bring our own law enforcement in here to remove them?
Yeah.
Is that how far you guys want to go with this?
No, if somebody wants to come to the meeting and they don't want to do it, just cancel the meeting. If that member who's sitting on the board says, no, I'm not gonna wear a thing, I don't want to be in the meeting, cancel the meeting and blame it on them.
Let's put it, let's look at it this way, too, is that the chairman of any given board, right? Be it planning board, budget committee, what have you, the chairman of the board under the RSA has the authority to remove from the meeting anybody, whether a member of the committee or not, remove anybody whose actions are impeding the business of that meeting, okay?
Okay.
So, the chairperson would be the right person to enforce it, and if that person refuses to put their mask on, then the chairperson would say that you'll have to leave, and then if they don't leave, then, you know, then they're trespassing or what have you, and then you bring in an officer.
May I rank a recommendation?
Yes.
I believe everything you said is a valid point, and we may get to that point. I also like to try to resolve issues at the lowest level and keep in mind that people are out there on both sides, that hopefully we can work together and not go right to the extreme, although it definitely may be required.
Yes.
I would suggest that we reiterate very strongly with our department heads, our board heads, our, you know, staff, everybody. We send out a message tomorrow again saying, this is the policy, take it serious. At the same time, I would suggest, and I spoke to Town Administrator Sterndale today about this, and possibly contacting New Hampshire Municipal Association. We're not the first town that's done this. There are other towns out there that are going through this, we've been doing this for two years, and before we make any decisions and go to the extreme, we just get some advice and see what they say, see if we can work with people, see if we can resolve it through cooperation, and if that doesn't work, it may come to what you're saying. But, let's not alienate ourselves, you know, from the other side, this side, whichever side you're on. It shouldn't be about sides.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that people can, that doesn't mean that people can push it. You know, we still have to enforce this, but let's try through cooperation first and let them know that the board is serious.
Yeah, and I'm not advocating for that as the first response. I mean, but that has to be
Yep.
in the lineup of progressive responses going forward, right? You know, I think ultimately it does fall to the committee chair to maintain the order and decorum of the meeting and abiding by the, you know, the rules and policies of the building, right? Just like, it's no different than no shirt, no shoes, no service, right? If you think about it.
So, should the board send a message to?
Committee chairs and department heads, yeah.
If you don't want to wear the mask, don't come in. We'll get along, just like we've always had when people miss meetings. It's not a big deal. So, if you choose not to wear a mask in here, please don't come in. That's it. Respect your right for not coming in, not having attended the meeting because you don't believe in the mask. That's fine. I don't see why, I mean, just if you don't, you know, you can always send your comments, email in to your chairman of your board, about what's going on in that meeting for any opinions you want to put in. But, just don't show up.
What do you do with the person that does show up though and refuses?
Well, that's, they're being off, I mean, that's. If somebody wants to, if somebody wants to be that way.
If somebody's gonna be that belligerent.
Their true character for what they are, and I don't care who they are, I tell them right there it is. You know, this policy is out here to help the people here, and this is what people want, and this is why we're doing it. You know, there are tons of people come in this office every single day and they're all wearing masks. The majority of everybody that comes in is wearing a mask. Are you gonna get one or two that isn't? Absolutely, just like anything out there. There's always somebody that's breaking a rule or doing something because their belief is different than everybody else's, and that's fine. It's just the way, you're never gonna please everybody a hundred percent of the time. It's not gonna happen. Now, if somebody wants to come in and be that way, then, I mean, you know, they're, I think they're personally disrespecting everybody that's in that room by doing it that way. And if they feel comfortable coming in and disrespecting everybody that's there, well, that's their own personal issue. And I think people, you know, are gonna look differently at them, and if they want, you know, I mean, I'm not about to go do something to offend a bunch of people just because I have to set up my own personal point. You know, we're here to do the better good of Nottingham. We're here to do a job for the town of Nottingham. We're not here to set our own, with our signs or protest or say, hey, this is this. That's not the point of why we sit here on these boards. So, if somebody does want to come in and not wear their mask and make a stint about it, well, then shame on you. And I hope everybody that's sitting in the room tells them shame on you for being this way. I don't think we should have to even get to the point of bringing in police or anything like this. I think personally, people should have a better.
My problem is that, again, you take whoever the chair of is, whatever board, there's a lot of stress on them. I mean, everybody's adults, I mean, it's like, you know, you tell your kids, hey, don't do this or whatever. Yeah, most time they listen to you, but, but adult, they get it in their head, they're gonna come in, that's, they feel it's, you know, they're a free country, they can do what they want, it's a lot of.
So, that, that brings me to the third point. The moderator reached out to me today, so for the two big meetings that we have coming up, you know, maybe not just every individual meeting, but for the two big ones, she asked for a meeting tomorrow. I'm gonna meet with her, school, we're gonna go through procedures, just like we did last year during elections and stuff like that. We're gonna go through that, she's gonna be looking for support from the board. Obviously, in the school, the school has its own policies where the selectmen, you're making it an all of town buildings, but the school has its own school board, so they're gonna be included in that too, but they also have a mask mandate, and she's looking for universal, you know, cooperation between all the boards and stuff like that as to how we're going to handle this. So. I think on that one, we probably should have, and I'm not saying police, I don't think we should get to that level, but there should be some presence just to take the stress off of other people.
Well, you know, another thing to consider too is that if you watch the video of the budget committee meeting, there were a couple of people that went without masks and said, well, if he's not, you know, if this person's not gonna wear one, why should I have to wear one, right?
Well, with the school though, they can separate it, like they did last.
Yeah, yeah, but this, I mean, this doesn't have anything to do with the school. My, my point is, is that if we don't enforce our order, right? Then we're, we're abdicating our authority, right? It becomes optional and an out order means enough, right? Then anybody can do whatever they want. You know what I mean? So.
Mr. Chairman, do you want the board to send out something to the other boards? Or do you want me to do it on behalf of you?
Well, to be honest, yeah, this board needs to be prepared in the event that we have an individual. Just how far we want to take this.
Well, it's already happened.
Well, okay, and unfortunately, they have, they had left, but I really don't feel that this warrants being on the, you know, Boston Channel News or WMER or what have you because we're throwing people out for not wearing masks. I mean, at what point, you know?
Like Dale said, it's, there's gotta be like the carrot and the stick, right? And the stick has to be there, or else the carrot doesn't work. Not that we're gonna use it, like I said, we're not as our first response, but it's gotta be an option.
You say, you know, not that we're gonna use it, but we have to be prepared to use it in the event that it warrants it.
Oh, right.
Are you willing to go that far?
Yes, absolutely. If someone wants to be, I mean, in, in those cases where somebody shows up, they're, you know, they're,
All due respect.
They're blatant about it, they're, you know, they're, they're probably really trying to make a political statement, right? During a budget committee meeting.
Do you really want to get our police involved in a political statement? I mean, police officers have other things to do, you know, protecting our town.
Well, right, but when they're supposed to be a budget committee.
Are we gonna stage an officer here?
No, you call them if, you call them if they're needed, you know?
I just, I don't know, I think we're kind of going down a path that.
Every board has a selectmen rep at it, and it could be something as simple as what John said, just reaching out saying, can you please do this? I mean.
Here we go.
I'm sorry?
Here we go. Yeah, you need to grab a mask when you're out front, sir. You need to grab a mask while you're out front, sir. All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that should be our first response, you know, but it's gotta be on the table because there will be that person that, that defies the committee chair or, or, you know, anyone else, you know, calling them out on it. And at that point, when they're, you know, they're holding up the meeting, they're disrupting the business of that meeting, that's when it's not.
You can't move forward at that point.
Right.
And if you're actually doing it at that point there, there has to be something in RSA where the, you could, the chairman can recuse that member for disrupting the meeting, I mean, you can't have chaos.
And he can also shut it down and.
Shut it down?
Yeah. All right, Dale.
I mean, there's plenty of ways before the cops have to get involved where we can address this, and again, I really want.
I'll reach out to the New Hampshire MSA tomorrow.
You know, if people don't want to wear it, don't come in.
Might be good to get their guidance on this.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you know, what I'm saying sounds logical, but, yeah. You're right, I mean, if, if we, if the next time, you know, that happens and it ends up on the news, it's just.
I think we get a lot more done through cooperation.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I agree, but there's always gonna be someone there to test the boundaries, and I just want to make sure as a board, are we really prepared to go down that path if need be? And are we willing to, to take that to that level? I mean, that, do your thing tomorrow and, you know, we'll take it from there.
I mean, unless I'm deputized or something like that, I don't plan on telling anybody to put a mask on if they come in here. I don't, I don't have the authority to. I don't think I have that in my select, selectmen role to be an enforcer. I, I don't know, at least I know we have the training we had, it didn't mention anything about policing stuff. So, and again, I just, I wear a mask, I don't want to wear a mask, but I wear one because that's what they say you have to do, but some people just, they just don't believe in it for something, and I, I don't know why, but.
Well, if we didn't have a mask requirement, this wouldn't be an issue.
The old thing of the good of all, not just one, that, them days are old.
Issue would change if people won't come because they, there is no mask. You'll get the other side of the spectrum, so. You gotta think one way or the other.
Yeah.
You can't say we wouldn't have an issue because we don't have masks, because there's already people that aren't attending meetings because they're afraid of COVID, that are members of boards.
Tony, I mean, I understand what you're saying, you know, we as a board can enforce the mask policy, and, you know, it's not the police's responsibility to do it.
Well, right, but if they refuse to abide by, if they refuse to respect our authority.
I'll get to an answer.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, anything else?
That's all I have from the, those three.
All right. Action items from the last meeting. Obviously, we're talking about the budget at that point, right?
Yeah.
Anything else? Well, they're not on our agenda for coming, but that doesn't mean anything, so.
We should set them for the agenda for the next meeting.
Yep.
Because we need to finalize their budget.
Yes, we do.
So.
All right, doesn't look like there's anything for assessing either.
Do we have this to deal with, the event license?
Yeah, we do have actually assessing.
Okay, where is it in here though?
The tax deed you're talking about?
Tax deed, yeah.
That's not it. What's that?
Okay, that's the tax.
That's under general business.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, you want, that should be a quick one, you want to get, just to get that out of the way first before we go into the budget? Budget, I got a feeling it's gonna be a lengthy one, so.
Sure.
So, all right.
So, Mr. Sterndale, and those are, that's just, there's just one package there. I believe you all have a copy of that. What Mr. Sterndale is recommending is that we give a waiver on all of these right now because it can be changed, and it's going to keep your options open. That was his recommendation, that you don't actually take any of those tonight, but I believe it had to. It has to get in right now though, correct? Is that true? There is a timeframe for it. So, he's recommending that you give a waiver on these, it can be changed at any time, but you have to make the decision, you know.
And why, why would we want to wait? I missed your first part, what you were saying.
I, I don't have all the details on that.
Okay.
This was just handed to me today. If you make a decision to take it, then you've gone down that road. I don't think that all the research has been done on everything and that we don't have all the facts on some of these and stuff like that.
Okay.
So, he's recommending that we do a waiver for now, they can be changed at any time. It's not like a once-a-year thing or anything, they can be changed at any time, but that's going to stop.
Then I would, if the rest of the board concurs, I would follow his recommendation. We just waive them for now. Any questions, comments?
And you're saying this can be revisited at any time?
Yep.
Yes.
You need a, you're gonna need a motion on this, all right?
Yeah, if we were going to go for all of them, you would probably have to do them as individual, but, I mean, if you're gonna go through with them, if you're gonna waive it all, I believe you can accept it as is, as that report leaves.
Should we name off each and every one of them?
The past, we never did names, we just did addresses.
Right. Right, that's what I was getting at, but do we say them all?
It would be cleaner.
All right, and who wants to make a motion?
Oh, me.
Fuck me.
What would the, what would the? If you're going to name them all individually, you don't need like a, a motion right now. You would just go through them and vote on it, on each one. If you're going to just accept them all, you could do a motion that way, but i- if you're going to actually list them by addresses, you would do a vote on each one to either waive it or not.
Do you want me to call out each individual P I D? Or do you want to accept them all as waived at this time?
Everyone, I mean, we have a couple of, we have a few here that are pretty high, um, but I want to make sure it's a clean background before we move forward with a deed. By the way, let's make sure our ducks are in a row.
Well, there's history to everyone on here.
Yep.
I mean, I can go down, over half of these, I can tell you the history of them.
Yeah, I mean, some of them are getting up there.
Yep. Actually, a couple have, have, they crossed that policy we put in place a couple of years ago, the percentage, the value.
Now, look at those, look at those total due amounts on some of them. That's, that's no small, you know.
So I can just say right now, again, I mean, one hit, I'm just going to speak right now since we're here. The first three on the list have been in front of the planning board. Uh, there was a lot of issue, line issues and stuff like this, that was impeding that sale. Um, we did fix most of that so far. There are people interested in it, so again, that one, I would say absolutely yes for the waiver because it looks like it will be with some other little fine tuning, it should be get a property sold. That is not a property somebody's sitting on and just doesn't feel like paying the tax. There's a, yeah, there's a reason that they're, they're trying to actively sell that property, that property, so.
Okay, but then you've got some others here.
Yep, the next one on Robin Hood, that's a, I don't think a builtable lot that's oversitting there. So it's kind of just a piece of land that somebody doesn't want, but there's a tax because it sits on water. That's why the number's where it sits. And there's a discussion with Chris about that, uh, which.
And then the Cove Road?
I don't think it matters if it's taken or not, I don't see, you know. That one there, those people on that one there, this is the second time they did this to us. Towns already took this property once before back in two thousand ten or twelve or whatever that, they took it from the, the town took it. Literally physically owned it and then made a deal with them to, for them to pay off their things and get it back. And here they are back years later doing the same thing they did before.
Is that sixty-eight, fifty-seven, zero?
Yep, I'd say no on that one.
Yeah, I'd agree.
And that's a secondary property, that's not even a primary residence.
Okay. What about twenty-seven, eight?
Where are you?
Priest Road.
Uh, I don't, that's, well, I didn't say I knew them all, but that's, that's.
Well, no, 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 I, I just, I want to be clear on the high ones that, what, what we're doing going forward.
There was something that, uh, was written. Yes, if you can read in our notes, it says owner occupant just made contact me for the first time. Well, if you've made the first time you contacted our, our tax collector and you're that far in debt, that means you went three years or longer without giving a crap, without doing anything about it.
All right, well.
So again, I'm sorry not to be, I'm sounding like that I am the, uh.
Are any of these?
Fist on here, but you know, there's a limit where we have to sit here and say.
All right.
No, but again, I don't know if that's her primary, if that's that person's primary residence, then I absolutely no way will I ever.
Okay.
I will not, but I don't know if that's their primary residence. I have to look on their tax card to see if it is or not, or, I mean, if it's somebody's rental property and they're not paying for it, well, that's a whole different story. You know, because they live in a whole different town and that's another property than.
All right, and what about, uh, Kelsey Road?
Uh, yes, that's another one where, you know, when I looked that one up earlier today, you can see it on our tax.
And are any, you said some of these are owner occupied, so I am not in favor of tax deed in any of them that's occupied right now, especially if it's a elderly couple living there.
No, absolutely, if it's owner occupied, we don't do anything.
All right, so.
We've got to get.
Do, do we know which ones for sure out of these high ones that are not? You said some of them don't even have a lot of, a building on them, right? Like Cove?
Cove has a building on it.
It does, okay.
Yeah, but it's not their primary, it's, it's a, it's a seasonal.
All right, so nobody's there, okay, all right.
But you need this just because we're going to get some sort of report in, right? For these?
There is on the third page, there is, um, a letter from Mr. Sterndale showing the, the basic report on.
The Kelsey Road one, Chris's note was that they usually tend to pay at the last moment to avoid, um, property seizure, so.
Well, they're at the last moment.
They are. And then the, uh, Camelot property, looks like he's working on something there. Maybe some resolution there. Maybe we could give them, waive it this year and then if nothing transpires, then we can look at it next year.
I don't think you have to wait till next year.
Right.
You have the option of once Mr. Sterndale comes back in a full capacity of reviewing this again.
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we do this? Why don't we just, you know, waive them all for now until Mr. Sterndale comes back? And then we can address each and every one of them after we have more information. Does that sound fair?
Yeah. As long as we can revisit it, may not.
Right.
Chris, hopefully he's back very soon, if he's not, then we can revisit it again with, with Dale.
So notices have gone out to them all, but we're still not committed to do anything at the moment?
Notices have gone out for years, as John has said.
Yeah.
You know, people haven't paid their bills.
Well, I would be in favor of waiving it until we have more information and when Mr. Sterndale comes back.
Call for a vote, whatever you want to do.
Yeah. You a couple making a motion, Tony?
Uh, yeah, I just got to figure out how to say it.
You've got to label each one of them, right?
Well, if we're waiving them all, then.
I think if your motion identifies one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, specifically make, that there are sixteen properties in line with this paper, so we know that nothing has changed. And do it that way.
Okay, I'll make a motion that's a select word. Approve the, uh, tax deed waivers on the sixteen properties currently listed.
Do you have a second?
Second.
The motion and a second, all in favor? Those not in favor, okay, three to one, motion carries. All right. Now we'll roll right into the budget.
Do you want to deal with this event license first?
Oh, yes, yes, please, thank you.
So the event license, there was a special event brought forth. Uh, if you, the policy that was approved last year, we don't actually need board approval, uh, because of the size of it. And in fact, we've already gone through the procedures, um, I reached out to the police and fire. We've got a parking plan, we're making sure that they have, uh, they've provided documentation, porta potties and things like that, what the event is. It's a cornhole tournament on the lake itself. Uh, we have written permission from the landowners, so we've actually already approved this event. I'm putting it on here just to make you aware of it, so the board knows what's going on. But we did follow the policy already, it's already been approved, there's nothing required. I just didn't want you guys to be surprised that a special event happened that you didn't know about. It's all, everything's been approved and it's, um, neither police or fire had any concerns. And we do have a parking plan in place.
Okay, cool, okay.
What?
Planning board, have they ever issued with this?
I don't see why, I mean, just, I, I can ask them on, I can ask them on Wednesday, but. All right, they're not doing anything to touch them, it's a, I mean.
According to our policy, it's under a hundred people, so it didn't have to even go that route.
Very good.
Now you probably need a motion to approve this, right, Dale, or no?
What is that?
This? The event, no?
No, no, I was just making you aware of it, so.
All right.
It's, it, it has been approved already.
Oh, gotcha, all right. Okay. Any other business before we go into the budget?
No.
No? Okay. So. Been a little bit of, uh, in the last meeting, there were some cuts that were made which were brought it down to what, uh, seven? What was it, seven point four or something?
Seven point five percent.
Seven point five.
If we include the fire positions, four point eight without.
Okay, so with the fire positions, that's in the budget.
Right.
I know Donna had said that, uh, she rather not see personnel put as a warrant article. What is the board's consensus on that? I think where essentially, um.
Well, Donna said in her email that she wanted it.
Yeah, she wanted on it. Yeah, yeah, Chris had, uh, written to us about how, um, actually a lot of towns are doing it that way now. Um, it's.
Okay.
To be consistent with, uh, what was the name of the case? I don't know, but it's, it, it looked like it was sort of advantageous for us to do it that way.
All right.
Um, let me see if I can find the. Find the language on that. Here we go.
Well.
So Chris said the language comes from D R A, um, and then he gave us a link to a document on their site. He said it turns up as a multi-year approval. Said, I think the order may just take, the order may just make the grammar easier and clearly spell out the future year appropriations, which was, was the subject of lots of court activity years ago. With S B two, more and more items each year will be viewed as individual warrant articles. The size of this appropriation and the increases it produces in two separate years make this a politically difficult change to put in the operating budget. The system forces the select board to gamble the entire budget request over default levels in any effort to increase the budget. This is the nature, um, all right. This is the nature and perhaps the unstated intent of S B two. Appropriations for future new positions, one at a time, will not be as large relative to the total budget, so it may be easier to consider within the budget. So.
To put it as a warrant article.
Yeah. So if that's the case, then we would, unless I'm mistaken, we would approve the budget, uh, without the fire positions, with the four point eight percent increase. And then we would draft up the warrant article for the, for the fire department positions.
That's already been done, it's Article six, if you choose to.
Is it six? I looked through and I didn't see it.
All right, so I just, I just got a couple of questions, um, in regards to the fire. First of all, I'm not in favor of cutting anything from police and fire. That being said, under the fire department, I believe that there were some cuts made in the, uh, radio maintenance and vehicle maintenance. Is that accurate? Is that true?
I think so, I don't have my marked up cut, it's like we took a thousand out of eight.
So it's my understanding that, uh, and chief, uh, you can correct me on this if, uh, misspeak, uh, but instead of coming to the town, or let me back up here, under radio maintenance, it's my understanding that he, uh, fire chief or the department itself has enough in there to get two radios a year, plus any maintenance that has to be done with the radios. These radios average what, twenty-five hundred dollars, give or take?
Yes, that's correct, twenty-five hundred dollars each we bought through this year.
So instead of coming to the town in every ten, fifteen years, after their shelf life is done with a hundred thousand dollar warrant article to replace seventeen, eighteen radios, um, I believe the, the, the fire chief of the department is doing the right thing by just adding it in their budget for two every year, plus whatever maintenance that has to be done to their, to their radios as well, batteries, et cetera. So if you cut from that radio maintenance, that's going to, uh, prohibit him from replacing any radios. And it's my understanding, chief, and correct me if I'm wrong, you do have some radios that are sixteen, seventeen years old that are probably at the end of their life.
Correct, we have close to ten or twelve that are in service now, they're a fifteen year. This one here is probably a fourteen year, it's one of my favorite, okay? Uh, can I explain the way this works? When somebody in TV land dials nine one one, phone rings in a P S A, either in Concord or La Ponia, that pick up a phone, they call the dispatch center in Rockham, Rockham pushes a button, magic happens and it trips this radio. If the radio doesn't work, we don't know you got a problem.
Yeah.
That's it, it's not, it's not a nice to have.
So.
That is the primary communication.
So the viewers at home, in case they couldn't hear you, is basically, they don't carry pagers anymore. Everything is done through the radio system when they, when a call is toned out. I think that is, uh, uh, an important, um, you know, line item that we should not cut from.
Well, is that, is that maintenance or procurement?
Maintenance.
It's under maintenance, it's the only one I have, okay, for radio.
So, but you still have more money this year than last year, even after the money we cut? Is that going to hamstring your ability to get a couple of new radios?
I have more money, say that again?
You still have more money in this year's proposed budget.
Yep.
Than you had last year.
Correct.
So the money we cut, is that going to stop you from replacing any radios?
Correct, if you take a look, what, what do you have for actual for this year? I had a negative amount, I'm showing like seventy-one hundred dollars, seventy-one dollars, period.
Yeah, five, yeah, so you were budgeted last year, you were budgeted five thousand dollars, you spent five thousand seventy-one. This year, after the, the cuts that the board decided on, you have fifty-five hundred.
Yep.
For the year ahead.
After, after the cuts in there, that's taking in consideration replacement batteries, any type of, uh, maintenance. Right now, I have two or three radios that are out of service because of, uh, they're, they're broken, okay? They're not, they would need to be fixed, so. The target is to be able to replace two radios every year, but also cover the, the expected maintenance and new pieces like, uh, antennas, batteries and repairs, okay?
And of course, because of, uh, everything else going up, inflation and what have you, these radios are going to be more expensive this time around. Is that correct, chief?
This is true, everything's gone more expensive, that's for sure.
I would be in favor of putting that money back in, in the radio ma- maintenance, uh, line item.
That five thousand dollars you were speaking of, this was your budget from two weeks ago. This is not the, if you look at this one, um, line two eighteen only has thirty-five hundred in it, not the five thousand. So you, you've actually lowered him down to thirty-five hundred right now.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So that, that's an old number, you, you've already taken away fifteen hundred from. So that, that's an old number. You, you've already taken away fifteen hundred from them.
Alright, okay.
Fifty-five, I think is what I read, it was originally requested.
Right. Right now, the budget is showing thirty-five hundred.
Alright.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know the thirty-five. Thirty-five, I won't cut it. Thirty-five, well, thirty-five's gonna be tied on just repairing and, and maintaining the radios I have, never mind trying to replace one or two. The one or two replacement ends, it, it happens at the end of the fiscal year, obviously, like a lot of things, to see where we're at in terms of, uh, you know, what our maintenance. Uh, expenditures were for the year, okay, so.
So how much of that money have you spent out of this year's budget so far?
Nothing.
The radio money?
Yeah, the budget just started about ten, eleven days ago.
I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one?
Seven, minus seventy-one dollars.
Okay.
Plus, I'm gonna tell you, there was a thousand dollar credit in there also. Okay, there was a thousand dollar credit from the previous year in that, with, with one of the vendors.
Okay.
So originally, it started off when we first started this process. The radio maintenance was fifty-five hundred.
That's where it requested.
That's where it was, right? So we went down to thirty-five hundred, which we dropped five hundred dollars somewhere, and then dropped another fifteen hundred. So we almost took two thousand dollars away. The chief say right now that he can do five thousand, right?
Fifty-five is what I'm really requesting. Five thousand puts it close to, I can't even purchase the radios. Last year, there were twenty, twenty, uh, hang on a minute. Last year, uh, fifty-four, forty-nine oh seven divided by two, what's that, twenty-seven hundred each, okay?
And probably gonna be more now.
Yep. Twenty-seven.
So in, in reality, fifty-five isn't enough.
Fifty-five is what I requested. I'll get by on fifty-five, okay? I will get by on fifty-five.
I'd like it seen to be restored at fifty-five hundred.
Since the chief actually came in to sit here and ask for it, I'll just go back to the fifty-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was your radio procurement as well, I thought. I thought it was just maintenance.
Motion for that?
Negative. So.
Okay. Who would like to make a motion?
Uh, make a motion that we change to line two eighteen, uh, for the radio maintenance for the fire department. Uh, from where we have at thirty-five hundred, back to the fifty-five hundred dollars requested.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous? Now, one more thing, which brings me down to vehicle maintenance. There were some, there were some money cut from vehicle maintenance as well. Part of the, uh, money that he uses for vehicle maintenance is the inspections on our fire hoses, is that correct?
Annual hose testing, annual ladder testing, annual pump testing, plus state required vehicles. There's eight thousand dollars using last. Year's money, eight thousand dollars of that maintenance line is already, is already, uh, committed towards mandatory annual testing, okay?
Alright, and there's no wiggle room. That's mandatory, that's it. You gotta have this done regardless.
With the exception of this past year, where we're leading to, is this past year, because of COVID, the company that did our hose testing along with. Four other departments that I don't have to name right now, uh, begged off in the fall, because they didn't have the capability of doing it. So that line there was actually, uh, underspent, uh. By, by probably about four thousand dollars this year, okay? We, we test, uh, almost eleven thousand feet of hose annually, or we have tested, okay?
I wanna make sure I'm reading off the right one here, so, uh.
Thirteen.
You go, man, it's two fifteen.
There's fourteen thousand in the, that's what the budget is, right? Any more than that?
Uh, I requested fifteen on my original. That's what I planned on, fifteen.
Alright.
I don't know what.
And, so this covers tires and all that other stuff with these.
Correct.
Apparates and.
Not only plan, but any kind of, uh, corrective maintenance.
Okay.
The problem is, most of these maintenance things happen again in the fourth quarter. They're, you know, keyed along with the state inspections for our trucks and. So that money kinda sits there all year long, so, till the end of the fourth quarter.
Okay. And fourteen thousand will, will not cover you?
Fourteen's gonna be tight. It, it's, it's not, it's not. Fifteen is what I, I'm requesting, okay? Cause like I said, eight thousand based on previous years was, uh. Was needed to take care of the mandatory annual testing. That leaves us with eight K for any tires, uh, you know, the, the oil changes.
And you're not gonna know what those prices are until the fourth quarter, correct? So even this, even if we put a thousand dollars back into it, you may still be over.
I, I might still be short, but I have to do what I have to do there to make it work, okay? What I'm trying to avoid is having to come back and say, I'm broke and I need more money here, okay?
Right.
Or for something as crucial as having a truck out of service because of a safety-related failure, okay?
Alright, um, board's thoughts, Tony?
Um, I mean, I never would've guessed that hose maintenance goes under vehicle maintenance, but.
Part of the vehicle.
But I don't, yeah, I mean, yeah, technically. Are there any other areas in the budget where, where we could shuffle the values around? I mean, when, when we were. Going through the budget the past couple of meetings, we were trying to, rather than take large chunks from different areas of the budget, we were just trying to. Take a few chips here and there and spread it out to reduce that percentage, right? Um.
I, I understand that maybe, uh, hydrant maintenance was one of the other items.
Yeah.
That's one that I could probably absorb, cause it, it, this upcoming year, that's gonna cover things like. The painting, the replacement of the signs, there's no large dry hydrant replacement known at this time, okay? So that's one I can absorb a year, you know, if you wanted to take something out of it. The rest of the budget, I'm gonna give Mr. Sterndale some credit. It's pretty tight, okay? And especially over the last two years with COVID, it's been a touch and go situation here in my budget with manpower and supply costs and inflation, so I'm, I'm. I'm not offering that. I have, I don't have a lot of fat anywhere in this budget, I'm telling you, okay?
And. Well, there's an area we don't, we should not skimp on it. It should not be vehicle maintenance. So I would be in favor of putting a thousand dollars back into that.
Sure.
Tyler?
Yeah, I guess so.
Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, restore line two fifteen in the budget, back to fifteen thousand dollars.
Second? Any of you second?
Second.
The motion is second? All in favor? Tyler? Yeah, all unanimous?
Yep.
Okay. And you're comfortable, we'll leave the hydrant?
Leave the hydrant. I'm, I'm, I could, I could live with the hydrant.
Okay.
Uh, I, could I have a question though, a separate question here related to the, the, the positions? Having a warrant article, does that make it a super majority required? Is that a two-thirds majority?
I think it might.
I don't know.
I don't know, let's take a look.
That, that.
Cause it's boilerplate language on it.
Or is that a simple majority?
She didn't write anything. Oh, it doesn't say, honestly.
I'm pretty sure it's, it would need to be, but.
I just asked that, maybe, you know, that question get answered before you make your decision, cause super majorities are.
They're difficult. Well, it's, so it's three hundred and two thousand and change, right? The, the next article, which is the highway reconstruction, is three hundred thousand, and that simply says majority vote required.
But is it because it's multi-year? Is it considered a multi-year thing? And I'm not trying to, I don't, I just asked, I don't know, just.
No, it's a good question. I honestly don't know.
That's a really good question, cause that probably puts it out of, out of the realm of a possibility, to be quite honest with you, okay? That's, that's pretty tough. That's like trying to make everybody happy.
That's impossible.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions or comments, chief?
Getting cats.
I am all done, sir. Thank you for your time, okay?
Alright, thank you, chief.
And thank you for your support this weekend, guys, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. Tony, getting back to what you said, where are some others that we could cut from? Well.
I don't know. I went through it multiple times and I, there, there really wasn't a lot.
I mean, to have a significant impact, I mean, uh, I believe. We could take that truck out of, uh, the highway department, and I would not add a hundred thousand into their capital reserve fund. If you recall, it wasn't that long ago. That we asked the fire chief to cut his by fifty thousand. And since, since, uh, the new highway director has come in, he has gotten new equipment every year. I think we can hold off one year for any new pieces of equipment. We've asked the fire department to do it in the past, so I think now it's the highway department's turn. Questions, comments on that?
Nope.
I'm just looking up there about the, 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 the required, like he mentioned, it's on some, it's not on others, so. Pretty sure that's what it is. I remember seeing that when it came to school items, you had to get, that's what the. Like the, the proposal for the school. You needed a super majority or whatever to win that one. That wasn't a fifty-fifty, you know? That's why I failed. Made it through those anyways, but still, wasn't.
Just looking at the language on that. The, the explanation behind that, um, language for the warrant article, and it doesn't say what the requirement is for. Whether it's a simple majority, super majority, what have you, or three fifths, or, it doesn't say. Yeah, I'm, I'm. A little lost in that one. I don't know.
I don't have an answer for you, but unfortunately, this is the last time this board's gonna meet before the budget, so I think you're gonna have to. Make a decision without that critical piece of info.
I'd say we put it forward for the, as a warrant article and let the voters decide.
Now, all the planning, uh, board ones, they don't have anything. So, I think it's just the way it's written, maybe.
I mean, I, you know, I was, I was never of the mindset that it should go on a warrant article. I, I understand the reasons. A lot of people in town do want full-time fire coverage, so. I think presenting it this way. It, th- there might be some advantage to it, where, where presenting it in the form of a warrant article would make people go, oh yeah, I want that, you know? Remind people, you know, remind people that have a- asked about full-time fire coverage in the past. It might remind them of that and make them, you know. Inclined to go, yeah. I mean, this town has always been supportive with the police and fire department, so. Yeah, anyways.
Put it as a warrant article, gentlemen? Tyler, John?
What's that?
Fire, fire, put it as a warrant article. Yeah?
I just don't wanna see it voted down.
No, me neither.
That's the only thing. My only concern is I don't.
Well, you run the risk either way. I mean, if the townsfolk don't want it, they can vote no, and it goes to a default budget. You know, so either way.
That's if they vote, I mean, again, that's if they vote down the budget.
Right, right.
You know?
You know, if you look at the default budget. Uh, I forget where that number is, but there's not a big difference in the total dollar value between the default budget and. And, uh, this proposed budget, there's not a lot of difference. There's really is not a lot of fat in this. You know, this really reflects the. Above and beyond everything else, it reflects the increasing cost of everything, right? It reflects inflation, it reflects, you know, changes in the market, right?
Yep.
Changes in insurance and retirement rates. I mean, it's the, and all that stuff is beyond our control, you know? It's the cost of doing business for the town, so.
Yep. Alright, so what do you want, you wanna move forward as a warrant article?
Um, yeah, I mean. So it's already written, it's, it's in here, it's Article six.
Yeah.
On the draft, um. We gotta read through these and vote on them tonight, right? Yeah. Why don't we just start, um.
Well, before we do anything, are we done with the actual picking apart?
Budget?
I mean, I threw a couple of things out there, and I didn't, you know, other than John, I didn't get a comment on it.
So yanking the truck?
Yanking the truck and not fun, and not putting the, the, uh, hundred thousand into the, uh.
Vehicle twenty-five.
Vehicle program. Cause they, they're not taking possession of their new vehicle until next year, the dump truck. As I mentioned, every year, he's gotten new pieces of equipment, um.
He's only been here two years.
Great. He's on his third year. This is his third budget cycle, um.
They're not.
Okay.
That's what I was looking for, yeah, they're not.
Yeah, it's not in the budget.
Right now, your budget is up three thousand dollars from the start of the evening.
Yep. Yep.
But that, so that puts it up to two oh, two oh six, four ninety-three, and changes, it'll still be four point eight percent? Okay. Not, not, not enough to really shift that percentage.
Vehicle maintenance was what? We went to. We had to factor fifty-five hundred on vehicle maintenance, vehicle maintenance.
No, that was radio.
Oh.
Yeah, radio was back to fifty-five hundred, and vehicle maintenance was back to fifteen thousand.
Yep.
There you go.
Alright.
May I suggest that. We just finish with the budget itself, and with that, you, we can vote on it in a second, but do you want to keep the personnel? Cause that's still a budget item at this point. Do you wanna keep the personnel in the budget, or do you wanna move it to a warrant article?
I'd rather see it. We're talking about the fire department.
Our department personnel.
I'd rather see it moved to a warrant article. Tyler, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, unanimous?
So that should answer the question of which budget are we voting on? So it'll be the one without any, without any new positions in it?
And Betsy just has two changes to make in the morning, and then can send that on, unless you have anything else. We'll move on to warrant articles then?
Yeah, sure.
Do we wanna vote on this first?
But yeah, you need to do an official.
Okay.
Yeah, if you see that we've voted the one with the operating budget of the four point eight, I don't think that three thousand dollars is gonna change it that much.
No, it's still, still comes in at four point eight.
So.
Hold on, let me.
I have to commend, commend the board, uh, and as fire chief pointed out, Chris Sterndale, for, uh. You know, putting this together, I, I mean, um. Despite the rising cost of everything, I think this is a pretty solid budget. You know, four point eight percent, uh, is not, you know.
May I recommend that your motion doesn't actually talk about the four point eight, but it actually gives the number.
Yeah.
Number in the, you know, which would be four million, two hundred twenty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars.
There you go. Oh, you're gonna get it in a second. Alright. Yep, like. Alright, I'll make a motion that the select board approve. The two thousand twenty-two, uh, operating budget draft in the amount of four million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Can you, can we hold that just for a minute? I just wanna, I gotta ask a question that I was asked, to ask about the general assistance, uh, department. What's line number? That would be starting with three oh, or three oh eight is the title, and then three oh nine to.
Thank you.
Should we call that the town donation department?
Yeah. And I was, it was asked, I mean, are there things on here that we don't use? And if they are, why do we have money budgeted towards them? And I don't.
So what was the number?
Well, you could go from, uh, three oh nine down to three twenty-six. And.
Oh, those, okay.
I believe that this area of the budget is actually worked on by Courtney. She, I believe, takes care of the elderly, uh, the, stuff like that for the town.
Is that what the majority of these are, for the elderly?
Well, yeah, I mean, ride assistance is there.
Oh, the social services lines, okay.
You know, I mean.
I believe some of them are, but not all. There, there's.
Richie McFarland, even, age response, CASA, that's for court advocates for children, um, the Ready Rides, Red Cross. There's nothing for Red Cross. Meals on Wheels. Community Action Program, that's, uh, that's through Rockingham County, right? Remember right?
Yeah.
I mean, these are all things that benefit the town. So.
Goodness, none of them will happen last year.
You're right. Cutting this, uh, I'm not in favor of cutting for the elderly.
Tyler, are, are you sure it was three oh nine?
Well, I'm just saying not three oh nine, it's something to say in three oh eight's a section, general assistance.
Oh, okay, so you're talking three hundred through three oh eight, okay.
Oh.
So that's general assistance.
Yeah.
And, okay. So yeah, we, we had that discussion. I, I had kinda wondered that myself. But it's one of those things where like you, you set aside the money in case it's needed. And if not, then it just rolls back into the general fund for next year, right?
Uh, I believe that this money here is always taken from us.
You think so?
Yeah. I don't think there's ever a.
Well, that's what I, I think, I think people are figuring if it's taken from us and we don't use it, it's not right. That's what I get the feeling.
Well, defined by taken.
Is that money actually spent, Betsy?
Is it a donation or?
The, the general assistance fund is for people who need that remain into town in an emergency situation.
Yeah.
So if in the middle of the winter they're getting their electricity shut off or they're without heat, we can, you know, temporarily help them in, you know, in a, in a.
So the question is, do we use, use everything on these line items?
We have the, you're not talking about the social services, you're talking about the.
General assistance.
General assistance.
Well, no, general assistance is welfare, that's three hundred to three oh eight.
Yeah.
Three oh nine.
Three twenty-six.
Is social services. You're talking about social services.
Social services are all area agencies that provide services to different people in town. They request the funds, they send us reports of how many people in town they have helped, you know, Ready Rides.
And that's where we figure out budget.
That's where we figure out outside donations towards these nonprofit.
And they let us know, if we use them, they let us know that they've helped a person in town, or, okay.
Alright. I, I think I think what the individual from the budget committee was asking is that the budget committee used to receive pieces of paper that said, but what exactly is that each of the items were for, and how many people, like Ready Rides helped fifteen people. And the budget committee hasn't been received.
So, can we, can I just throw something out there? Come next year, can we have that information, Betsy?
Yes, I can provide that.
So.
They, they mail things back and I put them in the file quickly if they don't request the money or if they don't respond to us, then usually not.
I think that could be helpful and, and, and for next year, but I would say leave it alone for this year. Questions, comments?
Nope. Nope.
In favor of leaving it?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, well, I, I did make a motion for the budgeted amount forty-four, twenty-nine, one ninety-nine.
Do we have a second?
Could you say it again?
So I, I had already made my.
The motion, yeah, yeah, I'll second Tony.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Oh, unanimous? Now we can tackle the, uh, Warren articles.
Alright, so we're just gonna read through these one at a time?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so the first, the first Warren article for us is Article Five, and that's for the budget, and we just, um, we just approved that.
Alright, so we just gotta change it to nine.
So four, four zero.
Yeah.
My pen is dying. Alright, Article Six, shall the town vote to add? Oh, I should just make it a motion as I read it, thank you. I should make it a motion as I read it. Alright, so I'll make a motion, the select board approve Article Six on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, shall the town vote to add full-time personnel to the fire department, which calls for salary and benefits for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three of three hundred and two thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars, and further to raise and appropriate a hundred thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salary and benefits. The estimated tax impact is point one two four per thousand of property valuation.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Okay. Alright, I'll make a motion, the select board approve Article Seven on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for highway reconstruction and maintenance work on Case Road, Oak Ridge, and Flutter Street, or other roads in Nottingham if a priority arises. This is a non-lapsing appropriation on, per RSA thirty-two colon seven, section six, and will not lapse until the work is complete or not later than one year after the end of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, whichever occurs earlier. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero point three seven zero dollars per thousand of property valuation.
We could ask about Case Road. Are we talking Case Road, the part that's paved already, or are we talking about paving all of Case Road?
That was my question too.
It's reconstruction and maintenance work, so, I don't know, it, uh, it could be.
If you'd like, I could step out and place a phone call and find that out for you if you want.
It's on the CIP sheet.
So do you know whether it's the dirt part or the, just the paving part? Okay, yeah, that would be helpful. So why don't we table that one? We'll move on to the next one, when she comes back, we'll come back.
Alright, I'll come back to that. Alright, I'll make a motion, the select board approve Article Eight on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand dollars to be added to the Highway Truck Capital Reserve Fund previously established. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero point one two three dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation. So that puts a hundred thousand dollars into the Highway Truck Capital Reserve Fund.
Was that a second?
Yeah.
Alright, we have, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All those not in favor? Two, two.
Second, sorry.
Hi, John.
Thanks.
Okay. Alright, moving on. Make a motion, the select board approve Article Nine on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be added to the Fire Vehicle slash SCBA Capital Reserve Fund previously established. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero point one two three dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
Second that one?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Alright. I'll make a motion, the select board approve Article Ten on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of dashboard cameras for the Nottingham Police Department Cruisers. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero point zero four six dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Four, zero.
Alright, uh, I'll make a motion, the select board approve Article Eleven, which reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of a replacement handicap lift for the Nottingham Public Library. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero point zero four six dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous, four, zero.
Okay, I'll make a motion, the select board approve Article Twelve on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be added to the previously established revaluation Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of performing a statutory revaluation of property every five years. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero point zero two five dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
Alright, we have a motion, that's a second, John?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, all in favor? Unanimous, four, zero.
Okay, I'll make a motion, the select board approve Article Thirteen on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to be added to the Invasive Species Prevention and Eradication Removal Expendable Trust Fund previously established. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero point zero one two dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous, four, zero.
Okay, okay, I'll make a motion, the select board approve Article Fourteen on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-three thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing the necessary fuel, supplies, equipment, and maintenance to run the ambulance and billing services for two thousand twenty-two and to authorize the withdrawal of thirty-three thousand dollars from the Ambulance and Equipment Replacement Special Revenue Fund created for this purpose. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Betsy, did you have a information on, on, uh?
I have it right here.
Oh, you, oh, okay.
You wanna go back to Article Seven?
Yeah. Uh, was it seven or eight? Yeah, it was seven.
So this is from the Capital Improvement Program. Uh, the narrative says justification rationale for the project shim and overlay the following roads, Case Road, point eight miles, Oak Ridge, which is not part of this, but this is in here, um, and Flutter Street. This is approximately point three miles of existing paved roads that have been called out and the pavement plan to be overlaid. So it's existing paved.
So just maintenance on these, yeah, not re-engineering the road. Okay, so do you want me to re, remake the motion? Alright. Make a motion, the select board approve Article Seven on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for highway reconstruction and maintenance work on Case Road, Oak Ridge, and Flutter Street, or other roads in Nottingham if a priority arises. This is a non-lapsing appropriation under, per RSA thirty-two colon seven, section six, and will not lapse until the work is complete or not later than one year after the end of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, whichever occurs earlier. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero point three seven zero dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Alright.
Thank you, Betsy. Fifteen?
Yep. Okay. Make a motion, the select board approve Article Fifteen on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a new ambulance and to authorize the withdrawal of three hundred thousand dollars from the Ambulance and Equipment Replacement Special Revenue Fund created for this purpose. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous, four, zero.
I missed eleven. Did eleven pass four? I'm sorry.
Eleven, sorry, uh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. Alright, I'll make a motion, the select board approve Article Sixteen on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-eight thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new Ford F-Three-Fifty utility truck and to authorize the withdrawal of forty-eight thousand dollars from the Highway Truck Capital Reserve Fund established for this purpose. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, those who oppose? Three to one.
Um, should we be saying it says, um, approve and recommend?
Yeah, probably.
Yep.
Okay, can I add that into each one?
Approve and recommend, yep, yep. No, you're right, because the language on the, the form is, select board recommends this appropriation, so.
Good catch line.
Yep. And I've got what, I got two, two left, three left?
I thought about it, I thought.
Yeah. Alright, I'll make a motion, the select board approve and recommend Article Seventeen on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, to see if the town will vote to use fund balance to pay off long-term debt acquired to purchase property known as Mulligan Forest in two thousand seven. The balance of this debt is two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The savings in principal and interest would reduce the tax impact by zero point zero five two dollars beginning in two thousand twenty-three. Uh, majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero per thousand dollars of property valuation. Shouldn't that say something like zero point zero five two of the tax rate? Tax rate impact? Right, right, but people are gonna say, people are gonna wonder, how is that five and a quarter cents gonna help me? You know? There, there'll be confusion between their tax bill and the tax rate, unless we specify that. But it would be on the tax rate. Right? So.
But not till twenty-three.
Well, that's what it says, beginning in two thousand twenty-three, but I think we need to add the word rate in there. So let me cancel my motion. And I'll make a motion that we edit Article Seventeen to read, to see if the town will vote to use fund balance to pay off long-term debt acquired to purchase property known as Mulligan Forest in two thousand seven. The balance of this debt is two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The savings in principal and interest would reduce the tax rate impact. Or should we say rate impact, or just tax rate?
Tax rate.
What do we think? What makes more sense, Betsy? Just tax rate? Okay. By zero point zero five two dollars? Should we say per, per thousand? Or just leave it at tax rate? Tax rate? Per. Okay, so I'll say that sentence again, the savings in principal and interest would reduce the tax rate by zero point zero five two dollars per thousand dollars in property valuation beginning in two thousand twenty-three. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is, should we even have that line, cause it's? Or we could say the estimated tax impact for two thousand twenty-two?
Yeah.
Right, 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 but...
Yeah.
Took, 'cause we're, in the sentence before, we're saying it's gonna reduce it by five point two cents per...
In two thousand twenty-two, it's gonna reduce the tax rate in two thousand twenty-three.
Right.
So... It's zero.
Okay. All right, so, last sentence, "The estimated tax impact is zero dollars per thousand of property valuation." And yeah.
This is the amendment, or you, or you...
That's, that's the amendment.
Okay.
Do we want to approve the amendment? So that whole mess that I just said, that was a motion.
I'll second that. Lorraine, did you get that? All right, we have a motion and a second?
Oh. Oh.
No, 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 I mean, I don't, when we got the information, uh, before, on December eighth regarding this, I mean, I just wanted to... Are we gonna be speaking with the Conservation Commission? Uh, I'm, I'm hearing there's a warrant article out there to request that they pay the, the debt off. It's done. It says that, that we'd have to have the approval. I just, I, I don't know, I have no issue with this, but...
Either way, the town money's being paid off, but I understand the first front line, but... I don't understand the purpose of that.
But hypothetically, let's say, the, uh, the, 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 that warrant article comes through and, and... Yep.
Let's check up, but read what Article twenty-three is. Okay, when you read Article, when you read Article twenty-three?
Okay.
It's, it's...
Yep, all right, fair enough.
We're getting money either way, if that passes, so it doesn't...
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's why I'm not trying to, just, that's why I was just giggling, 'cause I was rereading the, uh...
Okay. So as amended, uh...
So, yeah, that was, that was a... Yeah.
Then I seconded that last one.
Okay.
All right. Uh, we have a motion and a second for the amendment, all in favor?
Okay. Now, I'll make a motion to the Select Board, approve and recommend Article seventeen as amended.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Tyler?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, unanimous.
Yep, all right, so I'm gonna make the same, the same, uh...
Um, John, did you, um, second that one?
Uh, I seconded the first, and Tyler seconded the second.
Okay.
That was a tonful. Tongue twister.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion that the Select, that we amend Article eighteen to read, "See if the town will vote to use the proceeds from fund balance to pay off long-term debt acquired to build the new fire station in two thousand seven. The balance of this debt is one hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. The savings of principal and interest would reduce the tax rate by zero point zero five one dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation, beginning in two thousand twenty-three." Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero dollars per thousand of property valuation.
Um, I just wanna check, just make sure that number's right, the number we got on, uh, again, December, said the balance, uh, paid off the fire station was one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight-twenty.
All right, we'll, we'll come back to that one.
Okay, okay. Just that last sentence?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
Not to go for the petitions, but you have to go for those two.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
We're gonna come back to eighteen, or? Yeah, yeah, all right, so we'll come back to eighteen.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to amend Article nineteen and add, as the final sentence, "The estimated tax impact is zero dollars per thousand of property valuation."
Oh, you're saying that on nineteen?
On nineteen and twenty, actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the same motion for twenty. "The estimated tax impact is zero dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation." It's a standard sentence, and it's on all the other ones, it's just missing from these two.
I'm good with that. Second?
Okay.
All right, a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Then I'm gonna make the same motion, uh, to amend Article, to amend Article twenty, also adding the final sentence, "The estimated tax impact is zero per thousand of property valuation."
Motion, and who's second?
I.
All right.
Oh, no, it's John did, sorry.
Okay, so unanimous on that one?
So are we gonna go back and, on both of those twenty-four? Are you gonna approve or recommend?
Yeah, we just amended them, and now, now I'm gonna read, now I'm gonna go back and read them.
I think it's two fifty-five, what's, uh, District one thirty-two, and, yeah.
What is it saying here, one fifty-three?
Yeah.
Is that twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah. Oh, she's checking it now, so... All right. Make a motion that the Select Board approve and recommend Article nineteen on the two thousand twenty-two ballot, uh, correction, the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, "Shall the town vote to adopt the provisions of RSA thirty-six dash A colon four dash A, section one B, to authorize the Conservation Commission to expend funds for contributions to qualified organizations for the purchase of property interests or facilitating transactions related thereto, where the property interest is to be held by the qualified organization, and the town will retain no interest in the property." Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero dollars per thousand of property valuation.
Second.
Here we have a second, uh, motion and a second, all in favor? Uh, yeah, unanimous?
All right. And I'll make a motion to the Select Board, approve and recommend Article twenty on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, "To see if the town will vote to discontinue and relinquish all public interest in that portion of Cahill Road, beginning at the northwest corner of Tax Map sixty-eight, Lot fifty-one, and extending to its terminus, subject to the condition that the owner of Lot forty-nine dash two conveys an easement for a truck turnaround at a location and in a form satisfactory to the Board of Selectmen. The estimated tax impact is zero dollars per thousand of property valuation."
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous?
All right, and then from there on, it's all citizen petition articles?
Uh, I'm not sure.
So we're just waiting on...
Did you read eighteen?
What's the word?
I was correct, the one fifty-three is the current amount, the one twenty-six is the amount that will be...
All right, say that again? One thirty-six, two twenty-four, forty-two?
What was the last three digits?
One thirty-six, two twenty-four, forty-two. And then...
We gotta amend it.
And this is just for Mulligan, right? I'm sorry, fire station?
Fire station.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I will restate that motion. Two twenty, should I round up that dollar, or... Two twenty-five, okay. All right, I'll make a motion to the Select Board, approve and recommend Article eighteen on the two thousand twenty-two warrant, which reads, "To see if the town will vote to use proceeds from fund balance to pay off long-term debt acquired to build the new fire station in two thousand seven. The balance of this debt is one hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. The saving of principal and interest would reduce the tax rate by zero point zero five one dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation, beginning in two thousand twenty-three." Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero dollars per thousand of property valuation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
That's it.
Okay.
That's all our...
Thank you, Tony, for doing all that reading.
No, but Tony, I think you need to make a motion to recommend Article eighteen as well. Which means that...
We did.
Yeah, you did.
We just did that.
I thought you edited it.
No.
They did both.
Well, yeah. I, I withdrew my original motion from a few minutes ago, and then I remade it with the corrected number.
Wow, okay. Any more discussions on the warrant articles? No?
I just wanted to ask, it's not a warrant article, I, but about the, uh, we had also talked about the, the, the cost of the don't pay that off.
Oh, yeah, cost of what?
Paying the don't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and that, but that was financed through the state or something, but... 'Cause it's a super fund site or something? I don't know. You know, we can look into that, and at any point during the year, we can call a special meeting to ask the town to give us permission to do that. You know, I mean, it's eleventh hour on this year's budget, right? On this year's warrant. But we can do it at any time during the year.
I'm good with that.
But we'll need solid numbers on it and, and a process, if, if there is something different about it.
All right, so if there's no further discussion on the warrant articles or the budget?
I got nothing.
Got nothing, all right. Review action items for next meeting.
I just have not seen the...
Yep.
Okay. If there's no other business, we will, uh, go into non-public, let's see.
Reputation.
Sorry?
Reputation.
Reputation?
Non-public for reputation.
Which is what, what letter?
Don't know, I'll have to look that up for you.
I know who asked that question. I already know.
Hold on, I'll tell you in a minute.
Just to make sure while he's looking that up, to make sure I do that right, we shut off the cameras, but then, turning them back on, it doesn't happen when we come out, or how does that work?
Yes, it's over, huh?
Yeah, it's over.
It's over once it's...
We tell them it's gonna, and tell them it's gonna be over. It's gonna be gone, non-public, so...
Yes, sir. Here we go, hold on. Okay. And what is it, section two? All right. So A is for HR Matters, B is for Hiring. Uh, C, letter C, that's Reputation. All right, so I'll make a motion to the Select Board, enter non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section two, C.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Or roll call?
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Tyler Reeden.
Okay, and, uh, once we have completed our non-public session, we will come out and we'll adjourn the meeting at that point and seal the minutes. Thank you, Nottingham, have a good night.